Welcome to the Sleckman's meeting for Tuesday, January 17th. Anyone have any announcements? Sleckman Daley.
Yeah, well, I noticed in our information packet was the election calendar and nomination papers are already available. So I think in fairness, I need to say publicly what I've said to many of you privately. I am not intending to run for reelection this year. I will have done 12 years when I finish up and looking forward to a little change of pace.
Well, we'll be-
A big change of pace.
We'll be sorry to see you go, but you'll still be around.
I'll still be around.
There are plenty of boards and commissions that you can help out on.
Sleckman Green.
Yeah, I just want to mention that this Monday, the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration event was held at the Coolidge Corner Theater. I thought it was a very successful event. I got a lot of comments from people in the audience and a few emails indicating that they appreciate in particular the keynote, number one, but also the fact that the police chief and the superintendent of schools were willing to stand, and even though we went way over time, willing to stand up and take questions and, you know, take critiques from Hassan Hall as well as members of the audience. And the fact that they're willing to do that in addition to the substance of their remarks, I think, was greatly appreciated by people.
Sleckman Franco.
I was going to compliment Sleckman Green on a great event yesterday, but he's storm like thunder. I think all of us on the board were there. I found it to be a real, a great celebration, an educational experience and-
Very thought provoking.
Thought provoking, yeah. And I particularly enjoyed the poetry, which I know is something that Sleckman Green brought to the program just a few years ago when he took over the chairmanship, and I hope it continues into the future.
I loved the poetry part, too.
Let me say that I also did. I really thought, I thought the first reading in Maya Angelou's poem was by Jan Schreiber and then the poet who talked about Dr. King's life and work, and he was phenomenal. He really was. And so I congratulate you on a job well done. It was very thoughtful, thought provoking, and it makes one think about the ways in which implicit bias creeps in on us. And I thought that they gave some great examples. And I hope that many people watch it. I understand it was taped. Is that correct?
Yes.
By Big?
By Big.
So it'll be on accessibility.
Right. And, you know, what, a second, um, the Maya Angelou poem that we just mentioned was read at Pop Scriver's service, and I thought it was so appropriate in that context that I wanted to make sure that we use it to remember, you know, the many people who we've lost over the last year, so.
It was very well done. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, then I'll move on. I don't think anyone signed up for public comment. We have some minutes to approve. First is the executive session minutes for December 13th, and we also have minutes for January 3rd, and I know some corrections have been sent around, and we're going to hold the minutes of the 10th. They're not ready yet. So I will move the December 13th minutes and also the January 3rd minutes as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the next item is a question of appointing Nicholas Gersten as the student representative to the building committee for the Brookline High School Expansion Project. And he's nominated by the high school headmaster. Yes?
Yeah, let me say a couple of words about Nicholas Gersten. First of all, he helped me with my campaign, so I'm a little biased here, and I've known his mother from various committees for a few years. But, you know, from my experience, he is an incredible young man, both very, very smart, but also very focused, very committed to, you know, things that he works on. I think, you know, we're very lucky to have Nicholas working on this committee, and I'm just sorry that he's a senior and will only be able to do this for a short period of time, but he is an incredible person, incredible young man.
And he was. He attended his first meeting last week, to last degree, and he's clearly getting his feet wet, and I was sorry to hear that he is a senior because it means we will lose him and we'll, but on the other hand, we'll get different points of view of different students as they come through this system. But I'm pleased to hear that you think so highly of him, and I hope that he really can bring a lot to the table.
Okay, and let me just add, although he'll only be on the committee for a short period of time, he will bring, or he will take his commitment, knowledge, and understanding to whoever replaces him. So, I mean, there'll be some continuity there that would be very important.
Okay, so I'll move that we appoint Nicholas Gersten as the student rep to the building committee for the high school expansion project. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license for Pine Manor College. I've reviewed the application. Appears to be in order. Police Department sees no reason to deny the application, so I will move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcohol beverage sales license to Pine Manor College for a birthday party on Saturday, January 28th, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. at 400 Heath Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the last item on our miscellaneous calendar is making appointments to the Kent Street Lot Study Committee. Sleckman Franco.
Daley, I'm sorry. Yes, well, I will chair it, and Roger Blood from the HAB has agreed to join, Frank Carroll, who's an advocate for senior housing, obviously, Betsy DeWitt, Dick Garver, Ken Goldstein, Liz Linder, who's a neighbor who spoke before us with some concerns about having a project at that location, Mariah Nobreka is a member of the advisory committee and town meeting member and also lives in that neighborhood, Naomi Schweitzer is a town meeting member from precinct 10, but she is apparently an expert in affordable housing and has agreed to join us, and Don Warner is a member of the planning board.
EDA.
EDA.
And an architect.
Yes, and an architect. Sorry.
Okay, so I will move the slate of membership as just read by Sleckman Daley. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Moving on to our main calendar, and this is our annual request from the BAA for special use permit for the running of the 2017 Boston Marathon. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Hard to believe it's 90 days away from today, actually 90 days, so we're keeping the counter going at the BAA, so you can rest assured that the planning is well in force right now. So I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to discuss the 121st Annual Boston Athletic Association Boston Marathon. Keeping my remarks brief to allow for some time-
Just say for the record, you're Doug Flannery.
I am Doug Flannery.
Yes, okay.
For all intents and purposes, Boston Marathon hasn't changed much in the recent years besides the increased security posture and presence following the events of 2013. The vision for 2017 is to work within the same roadway footprint utilized essentially since 2006, thus not impacting any additional roadways. The 26.2 mile course, it's a rolling course, point to point, starting in Hopkinton and finishing in Boston in front of the Boston Public Library on Boylston Street. The event for this year will take place on April 17th, 2017, on Patriots Day. We have finalized the start times. As of right now, we still intend to have a 6:00 a.m. march, military march, up to about 25 soldiers marching without rucksacks, without any other equipment, just their utilities and their boots. No more than 25 of those folks going down the course. At 9:17, we'll have the wheelchairs for the men. At 9:19, it will be the women's wheelchairs. At 9:22, the hand cycles. And 9:32, the elite women. At 10:00 a.m., we'll have the elite men and wave one, so that'll be the first 7,500 runners down the course. At 10:00 a.m. will be, or excuse me, 10:25 is the second wave, 10:50 is the third wave, and then the last wave is at 11:15. You know, estimating at a 13:45 pace, and that's what it would take really to make this six-hour time limit that we have on the course, that would get them down here in about five and a half hours. So we're looking at around 4:45 for the last runners to be through the town of Brookline. So we just want to make that a point so that you understand that we're going to start working on the road reopening program at that time. The field size limit is 30,000 again this year, four waves basically of 7,500 runners per wave, and the time limit again is six hours to complete the course. The water stations are going to remain the same as they have in past years. We'll have one at Beacon in Washington and also between Marshall Street and Kent Street. We plan to use three pedestrian crosswalks in three locations, Beacon at Tapon Street, Beacon in Webster Street, and Beacon and Hawes Street. We'll also have four medical stations in the town of Brookline. They'll be at Beacon and Dean Road, Beacon and Washington Street, Beacon and Harvard at Coolidge Corner, and Beacon and Kent Street. As always, we also appreciate all the strong support and coordination from the Brookline Police Department and Public Works. Now, in the form of matter, I note that authorization should include the right to utilize the course roadway and adjacent sidewalks and other appropriate areas as determined in our planning sessions to conduct the race in a safe and controlled manner. Included should be the permission to erect necessary course signage, locate the official BA water stations, the Portage Johns, Red Cross stations, timing mats, mile markers, and other official functions. As in previous years, the fuel stations will be staffed by the BAA volunteers and the first aid stations led the American Red Cross under the auspices of the Boston Athletic Association. In order for the Boston Athletic Association to conduct a safe and successful marathon in Boston and the surrounding cities and towns on April 17th, 2017, on behalf of the BA, I respectfully request a special use permit to be granted to the Boston Athletic Association. As always, we appreciate the support of Brookline, the town, and all of its supporting coordinators.
Questions? Sleckman Daley.
Yeah, so when you say 30,000, is that, the year after the bombing, you greatly increased the field to allow people who hadn't gotten to complete it the year before and first responders to run?
Correct.
And since then, though, the level has remained higher than it was prior to the bombing. Is that not correct?
Prior to the bombing, we had, yeah, we had increased it to 30,000.
From what was it before?
I think we had up to 28,000. I wasn't with the BA at the time, so, yeah.
Well, it's when you mentioned the increased security, that has been my concern, because what used to be, I think, a very fun event for people in Brookline has sort of seemed like an armed takeover in recent years. And the three crossings are pretty far apart, you know, when people are, I mean, part of the problem, like up, I live in the Washington Square area, and if people want to stand on the T-track side in order to take the T when they're ready to leave, they're literally standing, you know, just feet away from the T. Otherwise, they're stuck on the other side of the road and they can't leave for hours. So I have been concerned about some of these arrangements in recent years. And I see the chief is there, and maybe he can, I know the comments I heard last year about the crossings were a little better than they had been the year or so before that, but maybe we can hear more details about how you allow people, especially the people with young children and babies and strollers and so forth, to get across Beacon Street.
Yeah, absolutely. We set up those three pedestrian crossings in a manner that, you know, when the crowds thin out essentially, we can start arranging for a kind of an approach across the road using a rope system so that it will allow people to make that crossing in a safe, effective manner. I mean, we really do understand that there is a, you know, the Beacon Street does really kind of keep people from crossing, and we know that people have to get to jobs and they have other shoppings and everything else to do. So while we do understand that, we do everything we can to try to accommodate for that, and our solution to that a few years ago was to actually put the pedestrian crossings in place, and we continue to revisit that every year. So we do the best we can with, you know, the volunteers that we have come out, and like as, I think we've discussed before, you know, the BAA, you know, we respond to, you know, what the needs are of the city and some of the security constraints that are put in place from our partners in public safety.
Yeah, well, we'll hear from the chief, but what we've been hearing is that the fact that you increased the field by so much is what makes it very hard for people to cross the street.
Well, I don't think increasing the field is really, because the field is going to be strung out if you had 12,000 people or you have 30,000 people.
It's not really very strung out by the time they get to Brookline.
But, chief, how did it work last year with the crossings?
Good evening. Last year, we got a lot of compliments on the crossings. The best of my memory, we had the road closed for under two hours that nobody could get across, and I think it was much less than that. Last year, we had, the runners for some reason were more spread out. I think the people that did the crossing, the BAA volunteers, had a couple of years under the belt to study it, and we were able to get, to work them pretty well. The one problem that we had, and we're in the process of correcting, we've talked to the BAA, we've talked internally at our meetings, is to get better signage so that people know exactly where the crossings are. They did have signs at each place, they just weren't high enough for people to see over the crowds. So that is a request we've already made of the DPW and the BAA to make sure that that gets done. I think, I know that we talked about the crossings and using the barricades, and again, I go back to the fact that it's all blocked off from after the finish line all the way up to St. Mary's Street with barricades. If we, and if we don't deploy them in Brookline, we're going to get inundated with crossings, and it's, it just makes for a dangerous day for Brookline, just on all that people, plus when you get the Red Sox game coming out and you get 34,000, 35,000 people dumped onto your roadway, they're going to be told to come to Brookline.
Well, I'll just reiterate the comment I made on previous years. When you pin people up behind those barricades, if there is a problem, like there was with the bombing, you make those people at greater risk. It is safer for the runners, I'll admit, but it's, I think it makes the people pinned up behind the barricades who can't jump out of the way if there's an incident, it puts them at greater risk, so I will continue to express my concern about all the barricades.
Sleckman Franco.
So I'll be silent on the security issues because I don't have the expertise to judge what the appropriate way to provide security is, but I do want to compliment the BAA on their organizational capacity. I've had the pleasure to represent this board at the half marathon for the past three years. And this past fall, this past October, Columbus Day weekend, it was a nasty, nasty day that was raining, I think sideways and cold to boot, so that's a risk of hypothermia for the runners and spectators, and I thought the BAA handled that very, very well and provided security and ensured the safety of participants, spectators, not only at White Stadium where the race ends, but along the course as well. I also want to thank the BAA for allowing the town to bundle numbers together and to run the teen Brookline program. And for those who may not be aware of that, this is a program the town runs to support, to help some of our philanthropic organizations, our nonprofit organizations in town, the library, the community mental health center, the teen center, a number of other organizations. And it's an example of maybe a little bit of an imposition to this town on Marathon Monday, going a long way to support some valued charities that do great work in the community 365 days a year. So thank you for allowing us to operate that program.
Thanks. Sleckman Green.
Yeah, I have a question regarding incidents such as the Marathon bombing a few years ago. The cost of those incidents that are borne by the town, how are they covered? And that, the insurance policy doesn't seem to be, doesn't seem to apply to those types of additional costs.
As far as how do we, well, I mean, we need additional police involvement, you know, there may be, I mean, I don't know what the cost would be, but I assume that there are additional costs when something like that happens. And, you know, so the question is, how are those costs covered? Yeah, we actually, we work with the Brookline Police Department, and, you know, any kind of cost that is assessed, that we get billed to the BAA, or we use the federal state, local grants, or any kind of, not grants actually, but use some of the federal money to, because we're a CER Level 2 event, which means that we're in a special category, so we get support from federal funding for this type of event. So like the, the Super Bowl is a CER 1 event, so they get very, they get a high level of funding, and then the Boston Marathon is considered a CER 2 event. So we enjoy some funding, and that helps us put our security in place. And that's where we get a lot of our direction, is from the federal and the state, as far as what kind of security posture and security measures that we have to put into place.
Mr. Kleckner?
Well, I would note on the permit that the BAA does make an unrestricted gift to the town, and next year will be $69,000, and they've committed to doing that for the next three-year period.
Correct.
So we have a number of times calculated, this, the cities and towns get together and talk about it, and we make sure that we feel that that's adequate, and currently it does cover most of our costs. And not to mention the numbers that were given that were used to generate, I think last year about $250,000 for charities.
Sleckman Heller.
I'm curious about the number of health and welfare stations, basically. You said that there were four, if I heard you correctly.
Correct.
And have you found that to be enough? If somebody has an accident, one of the runners, I'm thinking principally, you know, in between, and the distances between those stations are pretty significant if you turn your ankle or you break a leg or something. How are you able then to deal with that kind of situation?
For Brookline, as we get, as the race is set up, we have fewer medical stations on the front end of the course. It's past the halfway point that the actual medical stations get each other.
But we also have a plan in place for our deployment of people. The, both sides of Beacon Street are covered with police, fire, and ambulances. They're stationed there for the day. On the course, we have officers on bicycles, Fallon Ambulance has a bicycle crew, and in our command post is our Fallon Ambulance supervisor. So we make sure that everything's covered and people can get accommodated as soon as we hear from it.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
What do these shelters use for, that you have at those two locations?
If a runner or a spectator needs to take a break, needs assistance, wants, is cramping up and wants to go into a shelter, they go into shelter and they can wait there until we make arrangements to get their family. Our MRC and our SERP people staff it. They have, they do, I think they do like split the shifts during the day, and we provide some food, a bed, no, not a bed, it's a cot if they want to lay down in a blanket, and that's what, that's what they do. And then we, like I said, we can get their families to them if they need to get a ride home.
Okay, so I will move that we grant a special use permit for the running of the 2017 Boston Marathon on April 17th, 2017. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Next item is a reserve fund transfer for $210,000 for the, for legal services for the Human Resources Department. Ms. DeBeau.
Hi, I'm Sandra DeBeau. I'm the HR director, and part of my duties is dealing with issues, primarily with labor issues as they cross my desk. We have had, continued to deal with some fairly high legal costs as it regards a couple of employees who have been going through various stages of litigation, starting with arbitration or administrative systems that they go, whether it's the unemployment, I'm sorry, not unemployment, Division of Labor Relations or civil service. One in particular has just been moved from the MCAD to federal court. We have two instances of two employees who were discharged for very serious misconduct. They, for whatever reason, are challenging the unemployment denial. It was deniled on the entry level, then it was denied on appeal, and they're continuing to challenge it. We also, those two employees are also going to arbitration at this point. They both have criminal matters, that their attorneys convinced the arbitrator that we should put those arbitrations off, and so those are going to arbitration this winter and spring. We have, there haven't been any settlement discussions because they strongly believe they're going to be getting their jobs back. We do not, and so we anticipate it's going to be fully litigated through arbitration. We also have an issue that we're very, we've been dealing with very closely. We have an outside entity that is infusing itself into this union process that we have for discipline. It's making it very difficult to try to settle with the employee, resolve the situation, turn it around. We've already spent about $15,000 just on a lower level grievance procedure. We're not even at the third step or close to arbitration on these. So they're just these unusual circumstances that continue to have our legal costs be very high. And in these situations, it's difficult to try to settle because the, these particular employees believe that they are entitled to massive amounts of money, which they're not. The good news is that we have been working very closely with AFSCME in particular, and we have really been able to control our costs that we had had previously with them with unfair labor practices and arbitrations, and we continue to work diligently to keep those costs down. This year, we also are continuing our bargaining cycle. We're actively bargaining, negotiating with police, traffic, school traffic supervisors, and the dispatchers. Generally, when there's an uptick in the cycle of bargaining, we can find ways to absorb those costs, but because of this ongoing litigation that we have, it's been difficult to do that. Typically, our monthly costs hover-
a look at that. We agree. We don't want to spend money. We want to save money and we'll continue to evaluate that, the merits of having an additional in-house labor type of a council.
Yeah.
I would point out that they also support the school department, too.
Selectman Daly.
Yeah, I'm trying to mentally work that through because somebody who's an expert in workers' comp law, for instance, would not be in a pretty wide range, but still, I think it is enough money that it, that it may be worth. Because this, this is a reserve fund transfer, but how much was in your budget for this?
So, our budget, our line item in our budget, which is $127,000, hasn't been increased since 2011. And the fee alone has gone up significantly per hour on that. So, you know, whether there's some small adjustment, I think it, we have to approach it from multiple perspectives. And I think that we have been working very closely with town council. We had a very expensive federal court case that we were able to settle recently, last year, as you're aware of. And this one, this one that's going forward is of that same magnitude. And if we can settle it, that should decrease our costs. I have, you know, I've been here for a while now, but we, I have been working with department heads so that when we do hire someone, we check their references in ways that weren't necessarily done before and we take disciplinary actions sooner than later. And so, I do, I am hopeful that we will turn this around at some point.
Okay.
Good luck.
Yes, thank you.
I will move that we approve and transmit to the Advisory Committee the request of Human Resources Director Sandra DeBeau for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $210,000 for legal services. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the audit report introduced by our able audit committee chair, Selectman Daly.
Yes. Again, the most interesting committee in town. You guys always love this. I'm sure you were reading the reports over the weekend.
Right, every word.
During the football game.
I even highlighted and...
Yeah, okay, good. Good. That's what we like to see. Well, I am here tonight with Craig Peacock, who's a partner at Powers &amp; Sullivan, our audit firm. They do the audit work for many cities and towns in the Commonwealth. And of course, Michael DePietro, our controller. And so, once again, I am happy to say that there were no material misstatements in the basic financial statements that were found by the auditors. So, they gave us what they, what I think in the business is called a clean audit, which was good. The, we heard from the auditors that they had worked very well with our administration, gotten a material, and in fact, I will say that Craig said he felt a little trepidation because we were currently without a finance director. But Michael DePietro had everything highly organized when they got here. And so, this is, I think, one of their easier audits in the Commonwealth to do because usually the material is well-prepared. So, we did hear that there was some, there continue to be some issues with some accounts of the school department. This is, they take money in for things like sports events or, you know, activities and they seem to have a bit of a perennial problem as to, as to how they're handling that. The response from the school department was that they had wanted to hire an extra person to specifically work on these accounts and then didn't have the funding for it. But I hope they're going to move forward to get these a little more under control. They did point out to us, they're still waiting to hear more cybersecurity measures from us, I think, as we have been developing plans in that area. But so, the, if you see on page two, the first full paragraph there is where I tell you some of the numbers, some of the critical numbers of my report to you. We were, you know, operating in the black, which is good. We had assets totaling $358,305,000 at the end of the year. We had liabilities totaling $376,000, 115, $376 million, sorry, 115,000. As you can see, that, the liabilities are larger than the assets, but the assets, there was also a, some money that was going into the pension fund that has to be included on the asset side of things. So, they, that works out to a positive net position of $12,150,000. That's sort of us. What they do with the audit is snapshot view as of June 30th. And so, there's always considerable money in cash and frequently in the past, we've heard the question of, you know, why are you telling us that you can't spend money on things when you have this cash? But what you see at the end, at that kind of moment in time is often money that is set aside for earmarked already for various trust funds, building projects that we've got going on. Then also, we have the upcoming payrolls and things like that. So, it's not, there's not a lot of loose money sitting around that we could spend on other things, but, you know, we are continuing to operate, I think, in a reasonably prudent manner. We did receive the actuary analysis on our OPEPs after the committee had gone over the other audit information. The OPEP situation looks worse, but that is due, I'll let Craig speak a little more about this. This is due to a change in the government accounting standards and how we have to account for that money. We do have a trust fund. We're continuing to grow the money in the trust fund. We're putting a little more in each year, but we're not yet at what is considered the annual required contribution if we were on a 30-year funding schedule. So, therefore, the new accounting rules made us use a lower rate of return and so that the whole unfunded liability looks much larger. But I think vis a vis the other cities and towns, and maybe Craig can speak to this too, we're still making progress. We're, you know, one of the, one of the towns that's better situated on this issue than most of the others. So, they did not find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And as I said, they did compliment Mr. DePietro on his work as he's kind of covering the, some of the finance director activities as well as his own controller job.
We're able to set up a meeting here with the board. I would say this year, we're probably about two weeks earlier or so than we were last year, which I think lends itself to both all of the hard work that your various financial offices put in. Nancy mentioned a comment that I had mentioned, I may be giving a thumbs up to your comptroller and his team, really as well as your acting treasurer and her team. As you all know, your longtime finance director retired prior to the end of fiscal 16 and he, in some ways, was sort of a catalyst for many years of making sure, he was on a lot of boards, he was very involved in the audit. He would call almost weekly at times, how's this going, how's that going? I honestly used to tell your prior finance director that I would use him as an example with many other clients, that the timing of his office having fully reconciled cash and receivables is almost second to none for a community the size of Brookline. So, as auditors, we have to maintain our professional skepticism and, you know, look at things, kick the tires, ask questions we may not have asked in the past. And I'm going to be completely honest, coming into this year, knowing that Steve had been that catalyst in the past, I was wondering, okay, how would things go? I can't say enough for the way that your comptroller and his office and your assistant, acting treasurer, excuse me, and the assistant and the team within that office has stepped up. The information was readily available for us. Questions were answered in a timely manner. The package that was given to us upon arrival was second to none. It was just as good as in years past. Again, I've probably mentioned it in the past, but when we go to any of your financial team and ask questions, the ability for them to answer it either real time right then and there or get back to us in a very short amount of time, as auditors, it lets us know that they're involved. They're deeply involved in the transactions and what's going on in town hall. I cannot say that there are clients that we go to, you ask, maybe even the easiest of what might be a financial question, it's three days later, you're getting an answer. And from an audit standpoint, that might lead you to believe, are they working late at night trying to figure this all out? And that doesn't happen here in the Town of Brookline. I'd also, one other thing I'd like to just say that, working with the town's audit committee, audit committees have become much more prevalent, let's say, over the last five to seven years with Massachusetts municipalities. The audit committee of the Town of Brookline, again, really is, it keeps myself and our whole team on our toes. They ask a lot of questions. They're very well-respected people in their industries. Everybody asks very well-educated questions. You can't just show up and give them a report and expect nobody to have a question. So, they keep us on our toes. So, I like to think that I learned from them, it's a group effort realistically, just as we hope that the town and the various offices have learned from us over the years. It's kind of a give and a take and a working together. So, in summary, what I'd like to say is, the audit went, went very well this year. Again, the town has received what we call an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, which is the best that you can get. We've seen things like on the budgetary side, we had a surplus on the general fund budget of almost $6 million, which really goes to the fact that we're continuing to collect 98% to 99% of our various receivables in our first year, as well as the various departments are working to, you know, the permits are up, they're always looking for ways. I know there's been a lot of work lately with different parking lots and the fees associated with and such. It just goes to show that everybody that we work with, within the Town of Brookline, which I think starts from the top, with your town administrator, it's on the top and works its way down, everybody cares about their job, cares about the financial welfare and the benefits that the Town of Brookline can offer to their residents and such. And we see that conducting the audit and interacting with all of the team members throughout the Town of Brookline. So, I think that's great. Again, I mentioned the AR collections continue to be excellent. What we noticed, again, with the, with an interim treasurer, cash is still being reconciled on a monthly basis. Receivables are still being reconciled on a monthly basis. You can't ask for anything better than that. Our long-term debt is being reconciled between both your comptrollers and the treasurer's office. Again, this year, for probably the, if I remember correctly, the third time in the last 55 years, the treasurer's office has undertaken a refunding of debt. So, what that means, in a nutshell, is very similar to any of us refinancing our home. You look at your interest rates and you could do a little better and it saves on the long haul. This year, the refunding saved about almost another $800,000 of debt, debt being principal and/or interest costs over the life of those bonds. So, people, you know, your financial departments are very proactive and always looking for ways to better the finances of the Town of Brookline. As you all know, last year, we brought, or the town had to implement GASB68, which brought on that big liability for the net pension liability. This year would have been the second year, brought it up to about $221 million that's recognized on the town's full accrual financial statement. Coming down the pike for fiscal 18 is GASB75, which is going to do the same thing on other post-employment benefits, OPEP for short, as we're always discussing. So, what that's going to do is, it's going to essentially cause all Massachusetts communities, again, not just the Town of Brookline, but now to record the unfunded liability for OPEB on your full accrual statements, which is obviously going to bring that deficit of unassigned into a very large number. However, again, it's throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. These liabilities have always been there, but GASB is just now requiring them to be recognized and quantified on the financial statements. As Nancy mentioned, the town has been very proactive in putting funds aside and starting, there's maybe one community that over the last few years has met the rock occasionally and I don't believe they're any longer meeting it. When I look at the Town of Brookline, currently in these financials, you have about a little over $30 million put aside for that. In our client base of approximately, let's just call it 80 to 90 cities, towns, school districts, other local entities, if you will, you're in the top two or three that I can think of as far as money put aside. So... So that's very proactive. Again, it starts at the top with the various fund balance policies that the town maintains as far as how to utilize our free cash, what to do with it, what can be put into current operating budget and how we should be maintaining our reserves. Again, our stabilization fund is a little over $6.2 million. Our general fund, unreserved fund balance has consistently been maintained at a high 8% to 10% of general fund budget, which is great. That is clearly an attribute that lends itself to the town maintaining your AAA status. So on one hand, we may say, you know, we're utilizing some of our free cash and such to put money for OPEB, to put money into stabilization. However, by it being able to maintain, and the town maintaining your AAA rating, you're saving on debt costs. So, you know, there'd have to be a big analysis to know if it's a wash on both sides. However, it's clearly kudos go to the financial operations and the people making the decisions for the town of Brookline. Because maintaining your AAA is a wonderful thing to do. You're within, you know, a somewhat small group of communities within Massachusetts. And again, as far as the financial aspect of it, the audit couldn't have went better. The audit is made up of three reports, being the financial statements, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, as well as the management letter. I could go on and give an overview of the other two unless there were specific questions at this point on the financial statements themselves?
Okay. I guess I'll just start with a wow from an auditor. It's quite a positive statement. The one thing I caught on to, you know, your comments, so I guess that's page six of the management letter, in talking about the OPEBs going forward, what do you think the impact of that is going to be on our balance sheet? Is it going to be very dramatic?
Well, no. Realistically, as far as the town's financial statements go, it's already included in there. It is brought on to the financial statements. What communities do, as well as the town of Brookline, in order to allow yourselves a little bit of leeway in the investing decisions that can be made for the other post-employment benefit funds put aside, many communities that have a retirement system will vote to have the retirement system oversee those assets, which allows a little bit more leeway and hopefully correlates to, you know, a better rate of return over the years. From an audit standpoint, we feel that those are still town funds. And as such, they should just be maintained on the general ledger as opposed to off the books with the pension system. There's been no errors or irregularities noted. The accounts are reconciled. They're included within your financials. Just from an audit standpoint, we feel they should be maintained on the ledger as well as have your treasurer's office reconcile the accounts on a monthly basis along with every other account.
The comment about the school funds, and I note in the current status, and this is on page four, the school department recognized the issue and they have an FTE, however, it's So I presume this has been brought to their attention and, but I'm getting the feeling from the statement that they're just kind of kicking the can down the road a little bit.
Well, if I may answer that a little bit differently, I agree with your comment that this particular comment has sort of been addressed with the school for a couple of years. You know, then there was some transition in administration at the school and such. And I feel very strongly this year that the audit committee as well was very stern with the school department and spoke frankly about how this needs to be addressed, what can we do going forward. They are also thinking of various things that they can implement should the FTE become or remain unfunded. In order to, and again, what I'd like to say is, this was as a result of what we refer to as a site visit. You go into a various department or an activity of the community and just look at cash controls, how do we account for ticket sales and that type of thing. Again, what I'd like to say is, there were no errors or irregularities noted when we looked. However, there were some, what I'd refer to as internal controls that could be tightened to allow us to know really what was collected and that it's turned over timely and the decisions are made for my son and daughter the same way that you offer your son and daughter, whether they can afford to go on a field trip or that type of thing. So I feel that the tone in our meeting with the audit committee this year, addressed with the school department, I think clearly made it evident that this needs to be addressed. And I would expect to see some definite progress in 17, in my opinion, with or without the FTE fund.
One last, just a comment. I'll just acknowledge in the notes to the financials, page 73, the sensitivity analysis on the effects of higher or lower interest rate assumptions. So a one-point decrease, or 100 basis point decrease in the interest rate assumption increases our pension liability by 50 something, 50-ish thousand dollars, 50-ish million dollars, quite dramatic. So the earnings of our pension fund highlights the earnings are important.
Very true.
Selectman Green?
Yeah, I'd like to just emphasize the importance of addressing the fund issue with the school department. If you go back and read newspaper stories regarding public schools, these small funds are where the really bad headline risk is found. I mean, you're talking about small amounts of money, maybe, you know, funds kept in a shoebox. I mean, sometimes it's that bad. But if that hits the head, if that hits the newspaper, I mean, it makes us all look very, very bad. And it's not some, I mean, it's not a material financial issue, but it's a material governance issue that we really have to make sure that we address. You know, the fact that there's no fraud going on now, that's great, and I'm sure it will continue to not be a problem. But that's where it's so easy to slip into a mud hole.
I could not agree with you more. And as an audit firm, there's always that distinction between that qualitative and quantitative decision-making process of what do we verbally bring to management's attention? What might make it into paper? And I completely agree with you that it may not be $100 million. Someone could, someone in any community could walk away with $100. It could maybe be material to that department, or it's simply the fact that there was a lax in internal controls that allowed it to happen, and it hits the press, and yes, it's a bigger story than maybe the $100. And I could not agree with that summation anymore.
Selectman Franco?
So you talked a little bit about the retirement of our former finance director and some of the angst maybe, or the questions you felt about how this audit was going to go. I want to focus on that particular set of issues and maybe zoom out a little bit and ask you a more general question about the planning for the future with key town employees, department heads. The finance director obviously retired. Our fire chief retired in the past 12 months. I think there are some other town employees that are probably approaching-
Our health director.
Our health director. Some other town employees that will retire in the next 12, 24, 36 months after long service to the town. I looked in the audit report, I didn't see anything, but I wonder if you had a comment about training for new senior managers in the town, how you think we're positioned to do a transition of responsibilities? I know this is something that the town administrator had talked a lot about in his budget message for the FY '17 budget. I just wonder if you had some additional thoughts or comments about that?
Absolutely, yes. In years past, within the management letter, to start there, we've had some comments that talked about cross-training of employees within different offices to allow, you know, unanticipated illnesses or vacancies, let's suggest. Also, in working with the various town financial offices that are integral to the conduct of the audit, what we've noted is that all of your offices have strong policies, financial policies. There is a good protocol. You have a lot of long-term employees within the various departments that know their jobs very well. I believe that a lot of your department heads, in some ways, are able to have what I'll call additional time to not have to worry about a cash reconciliation, if we're speaking of treasury, and they're able to work with town administration and so on to look for ways to enhance financial policies, fund balance policies and that type of thing of the community. So as of this moment, I may not be 100% familiar with what the town's protocol will be. If I was hired as the new finance director, what will my training be and how will that start right away? However, when I look at the different policies and procedures that have been in place over the years, one in comparison to many other communities that we work with, and or, again, the long-term employees, the lack of management letter comments, quite frankly, over the years. There's been years where we've had many more. And then what I really feel is, the town's financial offices, department heads are very proactive in both, I think, working amongst yourselves together, but also calling the town's audit firm to say, hey, we're thinking about this. So we have this transaction that's maybe a little out of the ordinary course of business. What do you think? Well, how should this be handled? How will it ultimately be reported within the financial statements? So that may not directly answer your question as far as how a new department head or a new finance director might go about being trained. However, I feel that the infrastructure within the town of Brookline and your various offices are there to support new people coming on and lend itself to essentially someone being able to hit the ground running. Because again, I feel it's the tone from the top, the financial policies, you know, dwindled down to your various departments, people work very well together, and I think there's a very good organizational structure for someone to walk into and be able to understand what's important to the town of Brookline and work from there. Because again, assuming, and I don't want to ding new college students, but of course, I would think that your new finance director isn't going to be someone straight out of college. You're going to have some level of experience and understanding of what their job responsibilities will entail, the ability to work with a department that knows what they're doing and handles and reconciles monthly. I mean, I have clients that haven't reconciled cash for, you know, a year and a half, and you're there for two months just helping with that. We have never had those issues here with the town. So again, I hate to say it, but it does. It comes to tone from the top, it goes through the various departments. I believe there's a really good support system there for someone coming in. And I feel that all the various department heads work very well together and would facilitate helping bring a new, the various department heads up to speed in order to fit in, you know, to the town of Brookline.
Any other comments?
I'll make one other comment. As other board members, I am concerned about the issues with the, first of all, I'm pleased about the level of competence that you have cited as far as the town goes, and I'm obviously a little concerned about the school department issues. I will tell you that 25 years ago, the school management, financial management was much worse. And so this is light years ahead, and the fact that the problems are limited to these small, you know, amounts. It's true, as Selectman Green will say, there's a trust issue with the public, and I think that that's important, and it's important for us to get it right, for us to know how those funds are accounted for and to do it correctly. But it's small potatoes in terms of the whole budget. So for that, I am thankful. I'm wondering whether, in terms of the OPEBs, I thought that Selectman Daly said that the regulations were targeting the amount of interest that we could project as a level of interest that we could project in the next year and lower in that. Is that correct?
That is correct. May I explain it just quickly? What that is referred to as the discount rate. And when the community is working with their actuary, Selectman Daly mentioned that there was what we call the ARC, annual required contribution. Now, currently, again, I cannot think of one client that we have that is actually making the full ARC. When you materially make a contribution based on your ARC, so let's just make up numbers. Let's say the town's ARC is, I believe it's about $16 million, if my recollection serves me. If you were paying over, you know, $10, $14 million materially over, excuse me, what your actuary would be able to do would use what we would call a blended rate, and that discount rate would be able to be tipped up a little bit, which has a dramatic impact on the overall liability. When communities are on essentially what we call a pay-as-you-go, but yet the town of Brookline, as we mentioned, also has put aside $30 million. But when you look at the previous actuary, the unfunded liability was about $198 million, and I have not seen the new valuation as of yet. Those numbers are, of course, they're staggering for all Massachusetts communities. Even though we've had $30 million aside, when an actuary is looking at it, it's not, it's material, but it's not material to their calculation, so they're not able to use a blended rate, which means they have to use the lower discount rate, which then has the effect of increasing, as you suggested, it reduces the amount of expected earnings on those dollars, which increases the total unfunded liability going forward.
So is there, at any point, if, for instance, the rate is for the current, for prospective years, 3%, but you actually get back 4% or 5%, is there a way of reconciling that so that you can capture?
So if I may clarify, even though the actuary may have to use the 3% to derive your macro level numbers, if the, where the assets are being invested and how they're being invested, they earn 4%, 5%, 6%, that's maintained and stays with the OPEB trust fund, and that investment income, that increase in dollars, will become a factor in your next valuation. So again, they have to use the smaller discount rate, but if it earns more, it doesn't say go to the general fund or something else, it stays with the OPEB trust.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Franco, and then I think we need to move on.
Sure. So this can be a quick question, maybe even a yes or no answer. We talk a lot about GASB and sort of the changes that that has on our audit and our financial statements. I'm wondering if the, in the potpourri of legislation, the Municipal Modernization Act, which passed, I think, six or maybe even 10 months ago, there's something that we should be aware of that we're going to see turn up in our next audit or maybe the one after that? Are there other changes coming down the pipe?
You know, I'll have to say, for the most part, of the various things in the Municipal Modernization Act that will impact- Modernization Act that will impact the town currently are going to relate to the different things that your comptroller will deal with on the ledger, being able to take your allowance for abatement accounts and move them into one as opposed to having to worry about each and every year. So, I think the, the quick answer is no. The biggest things coming down the pike in relation to the GASP that will impact the town will be GASP 75 and the recognition of the OPEB liability.
Okay. And I think...
I just want to acknowledge, I have a very conscientious audit committee, and I should have mentioned their names at the beginning. Greg Grobstein, Jim Littleton, and Peter Flaherty, all CPAs, serve as the moderators' appointees. Beth Jackson Stram from the school committee, Lee Selwyn from the advisory committee, and ex officio, and I'm, I serve on behalf of this board, and ex officio, we have Mr. De Pietro, Mary Ellen Dunn, and Melissa Goff. And I also want to acknowledge that Austin Faison has been spending time down in the treasurer's office, working in, during this interim period, so thanks to him as well.
Okay.
So, we voted unanimously to accept the audit reports.
And we should do the same.
This board does the same.
Okay. So, I will move that this board accepts the audit report. All those in favor? Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. We now have a public hearing to discuss making a substantial change to the fiscal 17 CDBG One-Year Action Plan by reallocating $182,000 in CDBG funding to the Brookline Housing Authorities' Resident Security Playgrounds and Capital Improvements Fund. Mr. Viola.
Good evening. Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. And as the chair noted, we're looking for the board to approve the transfer of $182,000 from two fiscal year 2016 CDBG activities. Despite best efforts, these two activities were unable to expend the funds that were allocated to them. Given that the projects are flagged by HUD, it's incumbent upon program staff to find a use for the funds that'll, you know, that can use, recipient that could use the funds in a timely manner. After consideration, again, we're recommending that the funding, the $182,000, be reprogrammed from federal 2016 to the BHA's federal 2017 Resident Security Playgrounds and Improvements activity. And as the board knows, the BHA has a successful history in using CDBG funds to address system-wide, portfolio-wide capital improvements needs. We believe this is a sound use for the federal 2016 funds. Just very quickly, while we're here this evening, the town has a citizen participation plan for home and CDBG. When there's a change to funding priorities, as there is this year, part of how we address that change is to do public outreach and to conclude that outreach at a public hearing. After the public hearing this evening, there'll be an additional 30-day comment period during which we'll accept written comments. And after that lapses, program staff will notify HUD that the proposed substantial amendment was voted upon and approved, and we will, we will address any comments to come out of the public hearing tonight, if applicable. So, assuming your approval this evening, we'll be back before the board in February, mid-February, after the 30-day public comment lapses, asking you to approve, to amend and extend the existing contract we have with the BHA. So, I'm happy to take any comments or questions you have related to the proposed use of the funds, and I know that you're going to want to open the floor to public comment if applicable.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
No, I will just say, and I see Mr. Dobers here, so maybe he's going to speak a little bit more about this, but the housing authority buildings have a lot of needs. They don't get adequate funding from either the state or federal government, and so we are happy, when we can, to direct some of that CDBG money their way. So, he may talk a little more about these specifics that this would go to, but I'm in favor.
You just want to, Mr. Dobers, you just want to tell us a little about what you're going to do with it?
Good evening, everybody. And I guess this is a public comment as part of the public hearing. Here to speak in favor of the proposal. The change would, and I appreciate Nancy Daley's support, and she's quite right. The housing authority receives the majority of the funds that we use annually to maintain our buildings from our state and federal funders. Unfortunately, they aren't quite adequate to fully do the job, and we've been the beneficiary for many years in a row now of our own allocation of CDBG funds to do a whole range of improvements, from playgrounds to masonry repairs and everything in between. We're very grateful. The town of Brookline, as towns go, is generous with public housing, and it makes a big difference. It allows us to maintain our properties, for the most part, as properties that you'd walk by, and you wouldn't say that's public housing. You'd say that's an old department building. It looks okay, and it's in pretty good shape. So, we're very grateful in general. And then in specific, for the $180,000 that Joe Viola mentioned, we appreciate Joe and the planning department staff letting us know that there might be some funds available. We know funds have to be spent timely, and we, in addition to spending our own money on time, essentially, on all the awards we get, we keep some projects on the back burner to have available when other funds might become available, and this happens from time to time. And so, what we like to do is have a project ready to go that won't take too long, because there's only so much time available. And so, what we're going to plug in here is completing a project we've had going on for a couple of years, which is upgrading all the security cameras at our properties. This will allow us to upgrade the security cameras of three of our seniors' buildings, and they'll be the last three in our program, and it allows us to put in new generation security cameras. They're high-resolution. They cover the property 360 degrees. Probably most importantly, the data with these new generation cameras, the images get saved on the cloud, if you will. And what that allows us to do is if, in the rare instance, and this is the only time we, you know, we use the recordings from the cameras, we're not interested in seeing what our residents do on a day-to-day basis, but if there's a crime report, we can quickly and easily access the images, and furthermore, with a password, we can share the images with the police department, our colleagues at the BPD, or others who might be cooperating and working together on a, on an active crime situation. So, that is the use of the funds. We'll spend them quickly, and I really appreciate the support. It'll be nice to let the residents of these seniors' buildings know that we're putting in these current generation cameras for their security. So...
Okay. Does anyone else from the public wish to comment on this? I see none. Ah, Selectman Green.
I'm from the public, too. Okay, regarding the cameras, images held in the cloud, and the cloud includes a lot of places, as I understand. Some are secure, some are not so secure, apparently, as we're finding.
Indeed.
You know, recently. So, since they're in the cloud, they're basically going to be there forever, as opposed to, if we have it on our servers, we can delete it eventually.
Right.
Does that raise any issues that you can think of?
Um...
I guess I'm thinking of privacy issues and access to the images.
Yeah, no, I understand the concern. It's a very legitimate concern. As I say, when it comes to privacy issues, we only look at the images for one purpose. When there's, you know, the crime investigation. In terms of the security, we use a triple-secure system for these images. For starters, we work with a vendor who specializes in this work and works with us to maintain the images, and they are protected by both the housing authority server and the vendor's server, which are both current, kept up to good security levels, and can only be accessed if you have the training and the credentials to log on and see the images. So, there's a very tight security and limited ability to get at those images.
Are the images encrypted themselves?
Um, you know, I'm not the technical expert on this. I believe that they are encrypted until you enter in your authorization code, which would allow you, you know, to see the, see the actual images.
The images are never deleted? They're, you know, keep them for a month and then...
Yeah, that's, that's one of the advantages with the old generation cameras that stored the data locally. You can only store data for 15, 30 days, 60 days at the most, and here you can save the data for a much longer period of time, which comes in handy often. Investigation will go on for months or even years, so you want to be able to get at the data. Now, whether or not, after a year or two, we delete the data, just for storage and cost and efficiency purposes, I'm not sure about that, but, you know, it does, it does allow us to go back quite a ways.
If it's in the cloud, you can't delete it.
Well, it depends. It depends.
I defer to the expert.
Yeah. Yeah, it depends. Leave it at that. Any other questions?
My concern is, I mean, that's progress, but we're not going to roll back the clock to the pre-cloud era. But I think you just, we just need to make sure that we're thinking about the consequences of, you know, the new technologies and, in this case, the cloud.
Yeah. No, it's a point very well taken. I'm going to, the next couple of days, double-check on it, but as I say, we do have a redundant in, in the triple-security system. It's, um, these images are well-protected and beyond, you know, the usual files in your computer. There's significant additional security.
But don't be lulled into thinking they're absolutely secure, because all of these, you hear on the news almost every day, it seems like another system has been hacked into, look what happened to the Democratic Party.
Yeah, understood. Yeah. Point's very well taken.
Okay. So, I've asked for public comment. I don't think there's a vote tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Viola?
There is actually a vote.
Oh, there is?
Yeah, the memorandum I provided, I have an extra copy if you need.
Okay. So, I will move that we approve a substantial change to the fiscal year 2017 CDBG One-Year Action Plan by reallocating $182,000 in FY 2016 CDBG funding to the Brookline Housing Authorities' Resident Security Playgrounds and Capital Improvements Project as follows from $75,000 fiscal year 2016 CDBG, CDBG, boy, that's a tongue-twister. Project...
CDBG.
Yeah, right. 1879G, 112 Center Street, and also $107,000 fiscal year 2016 CDBG Project Affordable Housing Program II, $182,000 fiscal year 2017 CDBG Resident Security Playgrounds and Capital Improvements Program. I'll also move that we designate Allison Steinfeld, Director of Community Planning and Community Development, to execute all documents related to this transfer and commitment of funds to the Brookline Housing Authority for the Resident Security Playgrounds and Capital Improvement Project. So, there's two motions on the table. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Right on time for a change. We have a number of public hearings licensing, and the first one is a public hearing on the application of Love Wau, Brookline, doing business, Love Wau, Brookline, Inc., doing business as Love Wau. Alfred Pierre Honiger, owner, manager, holder of license to expose, keep-for-sale, sell all kinds of alcohol, beverage license, and this is for an increase in entertainment to add the showing of a French movie on Monday nights.
That is correct. Bonsoir. Good evening.
Yeah, what's going on?
Very well, thank you. Yeah, we are trying to develop that on Monday night to ask for an increase and have some, to entertain our guests on a slow night, which is Monday, and have some movies there.
Will have subtitles?
So, yes.
Unless you're uneducated, I can't speak French like me. Okay, this seems pretty straightforward. Any questions from the board?
Like old movies?
Old movies, yes, basically, yeah.
Jules and Jim.
Nineteen, well, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s.
This is a public hearing. Any members of the public wish to speak on this application to show movies? Okay, I see none.
Yes.
Let me just say that I don't speak French either, much to my disappointment, but I think this is, I mean, it sounds like incredibly good program for you to put on. I know a lot of people really enjoy French movies. I guess I can even enjoy them with subtitles, but I really hope you're successful and that people appreciate what you're bringing to the town.
Thank you.
So, I will move that we grant the application of Love Wau, Brookline, Inc., doing business as Love Wau. Alfred Pierre Honiger, owner, manager, holder of license to expose, keep, for sale, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages, to be drunk on the premises as a seven-day common visual and entertainment tape music at 1627 Beacon Street for an increase in entertainment to add the showing of a French movie on Monday nights from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. during the dinner hour. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Everybody, aye?
Thank you.
Next item is the question of approving the application of Chiharu Sushi and Noodle, which is going to open up at 370 Boilsom Street for a common visual license. Howdy, welcome.
Hello, how are you?
So, tell us what you're, what you're up to.
Yeah, my name is Kun Li.
Speaking to the, okay, there you go.
My name is Kun Li. I'm the restaurant's owner. Yeah, I come, I come here, I just want to, everyone knows, because I'm very interesting and very like cooking. My dream is, one day, I have my own restaurant to make my dream come true. So, before I find the space, it's a closed restaurant. So, I just want to try my best, change everything, make it new, and bring the delicious food for the neighbor, for the student, for everyone.
Okay, you're planning on seats?
Yes, 20 seats.
20 seats, okay. Yeah, that's a interesting location. I live kind of around the corner. Your parking is very difficult.
It's fine. You put nearby the, behind the restaurant, the street can free-parking two hours, and also we have five parking spaces.
Right, okay.
Yeah, this is enough.
And Chef Kun Li is a very experienced chef. He was nominated, select for Best 12 Chef for the year 2004 in the Boston area. He's very, very famous for the restaurant, Chiharu. He's very, very famous for the restaurant Haru Incaply, also makes it. He has a very good name representing his food. He make a food like very artistic. He doesn't treat it just like a food. He treat it like art, you know, he has a real talent, you know. So this would be like a restaurant to cultivate his dream. He live in that area too, you know.
Yeah, I just live up behind the restaurant, just by walk, maybe five minutes away.
Okay, so you're familiar with the location?
Yeah.
And, and his two son goes to the school in the area, Lincoln, also the.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Wow.
So he's from the neighborhood.
Right, yeah. Questions? Selectman Franco.
I see on your application, you're looking for hours of operation between seven A.M. and ten P.M., seven days a week. Are you planning on breakfast service, or is this just going to be lunch and dinner? What's your operational plan?
He's planning to have a breakfast, he think they're probably needed for the breakfast, since they are not many store open during the morning, but there's a bigger needed for area because of the student, you know, they go to school early, they need a very good nutritional breakfast for the student. So he's thinking, he's considered to have breakfast if he could open that early. Just very simple breakfast, it's not, nothing, you know, it's like when people order.
Yeah, just easy to take out.
It's not sushi for breakfast?
Yeah, those types of triangle rice.
And rice ball.
Right now, and people take and go.
Oh, really?
Yeah, triangle, the sushi, yeah, and, and some meatball.
The bun, the traditional steamed bun with the veggie, also the pork two kind.
Yeah, very easy, no the, no the maki, no the, some fancy, just easy to take, go to, maybe one, the triangle, the sushi, use the rice, inside maybe just a little bit, maybe the fish, the eat.
Pickle.
Yeah, pickle, they eat very easy, the kids, yeah.
Selectman Green.
So you're targeting the high school students, which are right near that location.
Actually, the neighborhood in the area.
Well, for breakfast, it sounds like you're targeting high school students.
Yes.
I just urge you to make sure that you're providing nutritious.
Yes, yes.
Food to the students.
Yes, excuse me, I'm, I'm a very healthy person.
An alternative to the donuts and other stuff.
Oh, no.
Not only high school students, but many students, many people in, in America.
I think American people do need a healthy breakfast.
I tried everything.
They should not have like those kind of fried stuff or the muffin, you know, bagel, you know, lack of nutrition for the, you know, grow ups. They should have like more knowledge on what kind of food they should eat, what kind they should try to avoid, you know, you try, we, we try to, you know, to educate more customer, tell them, you know, what they should eat smarter, you know, than before they go see the doctor.
Yeah.
Another reason is because this area sold out the breakfast, the restaurant. Right now, just the only coffee, sell some cookie, some coffee, yeah, they need more.
More choice.
More choice, more housing the food, usually for the kids, yeah.
More for choice.
Yeah.
Any other?
When are you opening?
We, we, we're going to have like a few months of renovations, so we try to open on the, around like me, Apple, yeah, so probably about like three months later.
Any other comments from the board? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Mr. Mickelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Randolph Mickelson, one sixty-one Cypress Street. And if the board wouldn't indulge me briefly, I'm again engaging in a little precinct five community building through the licensing hearing process. And I want to tell you that, that it's working. You know, one of the things about the Greater Point Neighborhood Association, of which I'm a director, is that it's a, it's a mixed neighborhood. We have residences and businesses, and some of the outreach to businesses that we've started in these encounters before the selectmen has actually led to connections in our neighborhood. We, I was telling the applicants who I met out in the foyer about our annual event called Taste of the Point, which, and, and we collect fairly modest dues from our members. One of the things we do with the dues is that we make available some stipends to restaurants in the area to cover costs for them to bring, you know, food on trays to a, a street event that we have every June, where people come, have a snack, have a drink, meet the business owners, meet each other, just hang out on the parking lot of a closed gas station at the corner of Rice and Cypress Street. It's a pretty wonderful event, and, and this is where it starts. So as a director of the association, I'm strongly supportive of the, of this and other local businesses. I hope you'll approve it. And I have, of course, offered them a membership application with discounted mid-year. And that's all I have to say. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And full disclosure, I'm a, I'm a director on the Point Neighborhood Association also. I'm all for livening up that corner. That corner needs livening up, and it needs thriving businesses, and I hope you'll thrive in that location. The location has challenges, has very narrow sidewalk right in front of it. So you're going to be challenged to bring people kind of, people, a lot of people cross Cypress Street at, at, on Route Nine, so your challenge is to get known, so people know, to make that right turn, go up a hundred feet.
You like a challenge.
Yeah.
It doesn't go easy way.
Yeah, we will be, make a map on the menu.
Right. Okay, so I will move that we approve the application of Chiharu Sushi and Noodle? Kun Lee?
Yes.
Okay, President, for a common vitueller license at three seventy Boilson Street, seating capacity twenty seats, with the hours of operation Sunday through Thursday, seven A.M. to ten P.M., and Friday and Saturday from seven A.M. to eleven P.M. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a public hearing on the application of Hersha Hospitality Management doing businesses Courtyard by Marriott Brookline for a, this is a change of manager from Latisha Tucker to Naomi St. Germain.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Upton, representing the applicant. With me is Naomi St. Germain, the proposed manager of record. She's already started at the Courtyard. She is TIPS trained, she has considerable experience in the hotel industry and also in the supervision of the sale and service of alcohol, and we're glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, I, I have some questions for Ms. St. Germain. So have you gotten familiar with our local liquor laws?
Yes, I, they actually forward all of that.
Speaking to the mic.
Oh, sorry. They actually forward that all to me to review, so I am, must say thoroughly, but yes, I am aware of.
Okay, so tell me what you know about the record-keeping aspect of it.
So in regards to the record-keeping, I know that we have to make sure that, you know, whoever's serving alcohol has to be TIPS certified, we have to have things on file in a binder, there's certain documentation that has to be placed on property, there's signage that has to be done in regards to the whole alcohol process.
Okay, good, you passed the test.
I didn't want to give a test. I thought the tests were already given.
We have many students in the area, and particularly that, you know, your establishment might be a place where students come, you know, have their parents staying for Parents' Weekend or whatever it might be, and they might be coming in. So we do take our, those who hold a liquor license in town, their responsibility to ask for identification very seriously. The town does some sting operations periodically, and, you know, there's the, the consequences if you fail that can be fairly severe. So I just ask you to be very mindful of, and you and your staff as well. Everybody has to know that they have to ask for identification of everybody who might possibly be young.
Can I ask a question in that regard?
Sure.
Do you have a policy as to what age you would ask up to it? Would you ask me?
So basically, I tell the staff, if there's, if you don't have any wrinkles, you need to be asking for an I.D. Like, we need to ask you for an I.D. So that.
You ask me?
Yeah. We would still ask you, yes.
I don't see in a gray hair selection. I'd be quite flattered if you asked to, show like.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this application? I see none. I will therefore move that we approve the application of Hersha Hospitality Management Limited Partnership doing business as Courtyard by Marriott Brookline, Latisha Tucker, manager, holder of license to expose, keep, for sale, and sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises as a seven-day common vitueller at forty Webster Street for a change of manager from Latisha Tucker to Naomi St. Germain. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we won't see you again.
There must be stop by for a drink.
In which case, I'll ask for your I.D.
Since you have no gray hair. And I'll be quite flattered.
Um, next item is a public hearing, no, it's not a public hearing. It's, oh, it is a public hearing, on the application of Beta Two Group LLC doing business as the Regal Eagle.
Beagle.
Beagle, Regal, Regal Beagle.
You're responsible.
And a change of manager from Christopher Tocchio to Christian.
Christian D'Esse.
Okay.
It's, it's a tough one.
By the time you're done, I'm going to say it right.
All right, good. You're going to be here that long? My, my parents were mean.
So tell us what's going on.
Okay. So do you also judge on the basis of wrinkles?
No. Look at this.
But seriously, do you card everyone, or?
We, I play by the book, and that's it. Like, we, we don't, we don't mess around, I'm not going to get in trouble for anything. And we put my tax laws, we put my carding, we put my everything, like, I just.
So does that mean you ask everyone for an I.D.?
I wouldn't, I'm going to be honest, I mean, if, if, if you're going to tell, tell me, I'm not going to ask you for your, for your, for your license, but I'm not the man, I'm not the bartender there.
What, are you going to ask Selectman Green?
No way. I'm going to get in trouble. No matter what I say, I'm in trouble.
I think you all look over twenty-one.
You're really, you're really making me blush now, guys.
Even Selectman Franco.
We're getting a little punchy.
That's Tuesday.
Well, this is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this application? Selectman Green.
My ignorance on why the board of selectmen is approving the transfer of the stock.
Because it's, it's integral to the ownership of the, of the establishment, and that's part of the.
It's when they hold a liquor license.
Liquor laws, yeah.
Now I know.
Okay, being that I hear no members of the public, and I think we've exhausted our comments, and we're getting a little punchy at it, I will be here all night. Hopefully, we won't be. I will move that we approve the application of Beta Two Group LLC doing business as the Regal Beagle. Christopher Tocchio, manager, holder of a license to expose, keep, for sale, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages, to be drunk on the premises as a seven-day common vitueller license at three oh eight Harvard Street for a change of manager and transfer of stock as follows. The manager from Christopher Tocchio to Christian.
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 Yeah, it's, it's a lot more simple than it sounds.
D'Esse. And the transfer stock from Christopher Tocchio to Christian D'Esse. Fifty percent fifty percent.
Of course, it's good.
He never gets names right, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm terrible at names.
Kind of a tough one.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
The next item is a question of approving the application of Toasted Brothers Brookline doing the business as the Friendly Toast, opening a new restaurant at thirteen sixty-six Beacon Streets. Come join the party.
Hello, folks, I'm Scott Pulver. Thank you for dedicating your beautiful time to things like this, so thank you. I'm the owner of the Friendly Toast. This is my crack GM, Stacy Pennard. She just successfully opened up the Friendly Toast in the Back Bay a year ago, and it's going smashingly to rave reviews and happy tummies. So we're here hoping to come to Coolidge Corner to do the same thing, to serve wonderful brunch all day, and don't be afraid to have meatloaf in the morning, it's okay. So we're here to ask for an applica, for your permission to do business here. Please let us know what we can do for you.
Okay, and I, I didn't flip the page, and this is also a public hearing on a liquor license.
Oh, yeah.
I neglected to say that. Selectman Heller.
So is this the same Friendly Toast that's in Cambridge?
Absolutely.
Fantastic.
Love to hear that.
I'm going to be thrilled.
Yeah.
So you're going to, it's the same menu?
Same menu, exactly.
How many seats?
It's going to be a hundred and forty seats.
And the same decor, the fifties?
I'm on eBay right now, shopping my face off.
I might have something in my house.
Please, that'll get you a free entree.
It's all right.
Selectman Franco.
One of the things that caught my attention in your application is your request for an eight A.M. liquor license, Monday through Saturday. I'm wondering what your hours are, your liquor license hours, at your three other locations? Do you have a license that early in the morning?
We do, and in Back Bay, we have a two o'clock liquor license in the morning, and we actually serve food till three o'clock. We actually shut off our liquor at twelve, so we're not the last guys.
On the other end, when do you start serving liquor?
Eight A.M. and then ten A.M. on Sundays.
Really?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we get a lot of like.
Bloody Marys, too.
Nurse crew, they come in after work, have Bloody Mary or Mimosa, have some breakfast.
It's, it's not like we're doing a shot and a beer. These are people that are having a pancake and a Mimosa with strawberries, going, this is elegant.
Did I, did you, I think you have to apply separately for the brunch thing to serve liquor before twelve noon, don't you?
I was told by your office that to come, I was, I was supposed to come here and, and that we were supposed to discuss this as a strong possibility, is what I was told from your office.
Okay.
They changed the law, I think, about a year and a half ago, where.
So you don't have to apply, you can just, okay.
It's, if we issue the liquor license, initial licenses.
Okay. Let me, I have a few questions for Ms. Pennard.
Absolutely.
Come over the microphone.
Here's the smarter person.
So have you gotten familiar with our liquor laws?
Yes, I have. Yep, we had a meeting with the police.
We take our, our, you know, responsibilities very seriously about not, not under, serving underage people, not over-serving anybody.
Yes.
Um, so, um, and then, and our police department does do stings periodically, so, um, you, not only you, but your staff, you know, you've got to train people to be very conscientious about that.
Absolutely, yeah. We train everyone very thoroughly on alcohol, and it's in all of our manuals, and our personal, um, company policy is under forty, we card everyone, if they look under forty.
You card everyone if they look under forty?
Yes.
Let me just, uh...
It does include...
Let me just press a little more on the morning, um, alcohol. Um, do, do you have an eight AM license in Cambridge?
Yes.
As in Portsmouth, New Hampshire?
Yes, yep.
How, how much liquor do you serve in the mornings?
That's a great question.
No.
Our ratio of liquor served is well below, uh, restaurant standard. We serve somewhere around twelve to fourteen percent liquor, where most places, people rely on about forty percent. So, we're not liquor-driven business. We're driven by eggs and bacon. That's just an accoutrement that gives it a little bit of pizzazz.
That's like, that's like a brunch amenity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we're not, we're not a bar where people are drinking. We are a place where people are eating, and they may have a mimosa or two, but we're not, we're not making our money selling alcohol.
Yeah, my, my, my only hesitancy is, is, and, for those, uh, for those who know me, I'm pretty laissez-faire when it comes to, uh, alcohol licenses. And, but we, we don't have, we have one morning alcohol license, and that's at the golf course.
That's the last place you wanna do it.
Um, and, 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 and that's it. And, um, I'm just...
During the week, you're saying?
The, I can't recall, and, and it started at ten AM, if I recall. It was, is it during the week? And, and the, and the pitch that was made to us is, you know, the golfers, uh, maybe they'll start at seven AM, they'll, they'll be done at ten, ten thirty.
You may get a drunk coming in, you know, and, and, you know, wanting three or four mimosas. Hopefully, you'll stop them, but, for the most part, you know, that's not the type of, um, clientele they're, they're expecting, so, that doesn't really bother me as much, although I can't drink that early.
You, you, so, you've had experience in Cambridge, in the Back Bay, in Portsmouth. I mean, do you have a problem with people over-consuming, or, uh, have you ever had, uh, been cited for any kind of violation in any of those places?
Uh, no. I mean, I was the GM of Cambridge for two years, and I've been in Boston for one year. I've never had an early morning drinking issue, or really any drinking issues at all. Um, I think that the good thing about the Toast is that we serve our full menu all day, too, so you can have, like, a burger, you know, at eight AM, you can have a mimosa at eight AM. And I think that, you know, people do work different schedules now, you know, you, the nurses are a great example. They love us, 'cause they get off their third shift, and they can kind of have, like, a more normal after-work experience, rather than going to, like, cell station diner or something. So, they really like it, and it, it's a nice, happy, you know, you have a mimosa at nine o'clock, just got off, working at the hospital all night, like, they're some of our best clients, so...
And, and no, we've never had a violation.
Okay. And in Cambridge, which I'm familiar with, and, and my, I've taken my grandchildren there, um, it seems to be a pretty hopping place with lots of children, and especially on the weekends, isn't that, isn't that good?
Absolutely.
I haven't observed, not that I was looking for, but didn't see as much liquor was being, uh, sold or consumed.
Again, we're not, we're not liquor-driven, it's just an accoutrement to the brunch feel and feeling.
Right.
That's all it is. If you said no, still go on and be, do business happily, we're just trying not to, you know, get away from our shtick.
Selectman Green? I'd like to ask if you make your corned beef fashers out of a can, but...
Homemade.
Homemade?
Oh, yeah.
Everything is homemade.
If I live down the street, I'll be there. So, it looks like you're taking over the space of the Korean barbecue?
Correct.
Okay. Um, okay. I didn't realize that they were leaving us.
There's, um, just, uh, something's been brought to my attention. You're listed as a, you're renting the premises, and, uh, in, in the application, the financial information section, is a purchase price for building and land?
No, that's a, that's a purchase price for equipment and goodwill.
Got it.
Key money, as we, as we call it in the business.
Key money?
Key money.
Key money.
To get in the door.
Got it.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay. I'm gonna say I'm really excited by your concept.
Thank you. Most people are where we currently are.
I just wanna throw out this thought to you, though.
Sure.
There's, my daughter lives in Dublin, Ireland.
Yes.
And the hottest place for breakfast is Brother Hubbard's, and they do this, uh, Middle Eastern thing, and it's sort of a salad, like, chickpeas, and then the egg on top of that with a little hot sauce. It's really good.
We could knock that out of the park.
You didn't know what you were in for when you came here.
Yeah.
Menu advice.
Yes.
It's not my first rodeo.
Yeah, this is a, this is a real punchy board tonight.
Yeah, Steve's a little legless right now.
If you leave me your email, I'll be happy to send you the recipe.
Um, I see you have grits, so that's, uh, oh, I prefer polenta grits, I'm sure you don't have that. I'm sorry. The fact that you have grits, you know, is really...
Um, so, unlike the chair, I am the resident stickler when it comes to, uh, alcohol licenses, which may surprise you based on my, uh, my youthful appearance. Uh, I, uh, have a policy of not voting for, um, for, uh, alcohol service on Sundays before noon, but, uh, what's really caught my attention here is the eight AM, uh, license during the week. So, I would propose that we, uh, we do ten AM service during the week, uh, and then ten AM service on Sunday.
Um, I, I understand your, uh, I understand your concern, but I think their track record of this particular establishment is pretty clear, and, um, I think that I would prefer to, uh, go with the hours that they have requested and see if there's a problem. And if there's a problem, we can always deal with it in that way. Uh, we can always change, or they can modify their, come to us for modification because it's not working, um, for whatever reason. So, I think, uh, you know, I, I agree with the comment that there are many people who work overnight shifts, who get off at seven AM, and they wanna come and have, before they go home, and, you know, for them, it's, it's really dinner. And, you know, they have a completely different schedule, a completely, uh, there's no reason that they shouldn't have their dinner, uh, drink with their dinner at eight AM. So, uh, I think that, that it's, it's, it serves a need, and, uh, I would, I would support it.
Yeah, I, I would support it also, for the same reason. Uh, I think the idea that, you know, you're giving, uh, people who work that overnight shift, uh, an opportunity to come in and have their dinner at eight o'clock, I think it's a good, a good idea, and we should, should really encourage that type of, I guess, creativity in terms of, uh, offering, uh, serving that market.
I would like, I'm gonna put, uh, Patty Correa on the, uh, hot seat. Are, are we setting, uh, if, if we go along with the eight AM license hour, are we setting a precedent so if, if, if a bar owner comes in and wants to open up at eight AM, um, because we've granted it here, does that set a precedent, uh, at, at another location?
Well, it'll be used against, as a precedent at another location. It's always a question of what the factors are. So, maybe there'll be different factors, you know, somewhere else, but, yeah, you, you wanna have reasons for, for your decision-making.
Well, I, I think a bar typically doesn't serve a full, um, breakfast, lunch, and dinner menu as this, I mean, really, it serves breakfast, but, uh, there are lunch and dinner items as well, and, uh, I, I think that is a key factor.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I think we should give it a try.
And I think the record should, we should make sure the record, uh, shows that we were, we were approving this because of the nature of the, um, of the establishment, um, as well as its record, but more, more importantly, I think, the nature of the establishment and the type of clientele it's, uh, targeting.
Okay, so, uh, Stephanie, make sure that those comments are included in the minutes.
Uh, there's nothing preventing us from doing this incrementally, doing a ten AM, um, license for six months, and then coming back with a little bit of a track record in Brookline, and the unique, um, location that it's gonna go into, and taking off the question of going to an eight AM license. It doesn't, doesn't have to be an all, you know, one-shot deal.
No, but there's nothing preventing us from doing it the other way, either. And, uh, and, um, you know, I, I think, as I said, I think it does serve a need. I think there are people who, whose work schedules are different, who don't, aren't nine to five, and, uh, who are working overnight, and I think it's, uh, and, and on the weekends, I think, uh, people wanna come in and, you know, have a, have a brunch menu at eight AM, and they wanna have a mimosa or a Bloody Mary. I think that's a very typical part of our culture, so I, I don't think that we're, it's in any danger of having, uh, lots of alcohol, people overindulging and walking out into the streets of Brookline. I'm not worried about that.
So, just a point of clarification, to take away hours is a large procedural hurdle. Uh, it takes a lot of, uh, uh, time for this board, and there's some legal requirements. So, I, I don't want anybody tonight to think that, uh, if there is an issue, we can, with a snap of our fingers, uh, change the hours. It's gonna, you know, this hearing requirements, and the ABCC has gotta review it, so I just, I wanna make sure we're all aware of what would be, what the process would be.
Wouldn't they have to review, renew the license after a year, anyway?
Twelve months, yeah.
Uh, Selectman Franco is correct, it's, it's difficult to take stuff away from people.
Okay.
Yeah, if there've been problems, I think it's, it's...
It's still difficult, even if there are problems. Um, okay, so, what I'm gonna do is, um, the, 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 the main motion will be the original, well, what, um, the main motion, let's see, how we, how we do this. Let me, yeah. So, there, there's three motions, and the last one is the hours, so let's just do, let's do the easy ones. Um, so, I'll move that we approve the application of Toasted Brothers Brookline LLC, doing business as the Friendly Toast, R. Scott Pulver and Eric Goodwin LLC, managers, for a common vitualler license with seating for a hundred and forty people at thirteen sixty-six Beacon Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item, the next motion is the question of approving the application of Toasted Brothers Brookline LLC, doing business as the Friendly Toast, R. Scott Pulver and Eric Goodwin LLC, managers, for entertainment license, tape music and TV, at thirteen sixty-six Beacon Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item, the next motion is the question of approving the application of Toasted Brothers Brookline LLC, doing business as the Friendly Toast, R. Scott Pulver and Eric Goodwin LLC, managers, for entertainment license, tape music and TV, at thirteen sixty-six Beacon Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, the last motion is the alcohol license, and that includes the hours, so I will...
I'm sorry, did you ask if anyone in the public...
Ah, right, right, right. Does anyone from the public wish to speak? This is a public hearing. I am so sorry. I see none. So, okay, thank you. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the motion on our calendar, and there's no indication of serving alcohol hours on here, so I just...
Well, actually, it's, um...
It says liquor hours, Sunday.
Liquor hours. Yeah, right down, right here.
Right here, liquor proposed hours.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Got it, okay. So, I'll, I'll read the main motion, and then if anyone wishes to make an amendment, you can move the amendment. We'll vote on the amended motion. If that fails, we'll go to the main, if that, if that fails...
We'll go to the main motion.
Go to the main motion, okay. So, um, I will move that we approve the application of Toasted Brothers Brookline LLC, doing business as Friendly Toast, R. Scott Pulver and Eric Goodwin LLC, managers, for a license to expose, keep, for sale, and sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages, to be drunk on the premises as a seven-day common vitualler at thirteen sixty-six Beacon Street, with a seating capacity of a hundred and forty, hours of operation, Sunday through Saturday, seven AM to ten PM. Uh, liquor hours, and here's where I'm expecting a motion to amend, Sunday, ten AM to ten PM, Monday through Saturday, eight AM to ten PM. Stacy Lynn Pennard, manager, this license is pledged to Cambridge Savings Bank.
I would move to amend, uh, and change the Monday to Saturday liquor hours to ten AM to ten PM.
Okay, so, on the motion to amend, all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
No.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
No.
Selectman Green?
No.
And the chair votes aye, so the motion fails. Um, so, the main motion is eight AM to ten PM, as applied for, all those in favor...
Monday through Saturday and ten to ten on Sunday.
Correct. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Hey, nice work, everybody.
Good luck.
Well, good luck in, in your new location, and welcome to town.
Disappointed.
Yeah.
Yes.
When will we open?
Uh, it's too bad.
Okay. Yep. Okay. And we're only fifteen minutes behind. Um, next item is a public hearing on a liquor license. So, uh, this is a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section sixty-four, to determine whether the Board of Selectmen is licensing authority for the town of Brookline, should modify, suspend, revoke, cancel, decline, to renew or set conditions precedent to the renewal of the wine and malt liquor license issued to BJD Management Corp., doing business as Shanghai Jade, based on a charge that is maintaining inactive liquor license in violation of Section A eleven of the Town of Brookline Sale of Alcoholic Beverage, uh, Regulations. This notice, the notice of this violation, hearing dated January fifth, two thousand seventeen, was delivered by hand and by email to Mr. Alexandrus Vicochinas, owner, manager. Uh, it's Exhibit One to this hearing and is incorporated by reference into the minutes of the hearing. This hearing is being recorded by the recording secretary. First, who's here to present the case in support of this charge?
Thank you, Chairman Wyszynski. Patty Correa, First Assistant Town Council, and, my mistake, the, um, the name of the licensee is Jenny Yu, and Ms. Yu is here.
Jenny Yu.
And I'll just add that Ms. Um, Ms. Yu's first language is not English, and she is And I'll just add that Ms. Yu's first language is not English, and she is here unrepresented, and I gave her assurances. We would be happy to explain what we're doing as we go along.
Okay, so if you don't understand anything, just stop us and... Okay, so, and you're here to represent the licensee. So state your name.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. My name's Jenny Yu, and, okay, I'm the owner at the BJD Management. The reason why, why I'm, we are...
Okay, so are you... Okay. And are you satisfied with the notice of the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And are there any exhibits, Ms. Correa?
Chairman Wyszynski, the town submitted the notice of violation as Exhibit 1, and there are no further exhibits.
Okay. We'll take evidence and hear from the parties in two phases. The first being whether or not there was a violation, and the second being the appropriate action by this board. Ms. Correa, are you prepared to present the case in support of the charge?
Thank you, Chairman Wyszynski. It is, I believe, uncontested, and Ms. Yu will confirm that her business closed last year. And she will explain the circumstances and her efforts to find a buyer, but the business has been closed for, I think, just under a year. And so that, I believe that is not contested.
Okay, so I guess now's the time to explain.
Thank you. Okay, see, the reason why we closed, because we found a buyer last year, and then we were about to sign the lease. The group of, the group of the buyer, they have a disagreement among of them. And then so the deal fell apart, and then we had to find another buyer. And then also because due to the holiday season, the discussion has been taken longer than expected. But now we find a buyer, and then so now we are, we are, now we are negotiating.
Okay, so you found a buyer, and you're in the process of negotiating?
Right.
And you just need some more time?
Right.
But how long do you think it will take?
Hopefully, I, hopefully not taking so long, because we have the buyer now, but we're just negotiating now, so I, you know...
Any question?
Are you close to agreement or negotiating on difficult terms, on difficult issues?
Because this is a commercial, you know, because everybody tried to, you know, like, looking for...
Looking for advantage?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, I mean, I think we don't want to let this go on indefinitely, but maybe... Let me ask Ms. Correa, can we continue this hearing for six weeks?
Well, the, the, well, let's continue, and then Ms. Correa has some suggestions for us that I think will address your, where are you going? So first, we need to rule on the charge, and then there's the remedy, and the remedy, I think, will address what you're suggesting. So we'll now decide whether the licensee is responsible for the violation, and we'll turn to the question, and then we'll turn to the question of what to do about it. I'll make a motion for finding that the licensee is responsible for the violation described in the hearing notice dated January 5th, that the license is inactive. All those in favor of finding responsible with regard to the charge of maintaining an inactive license in violation of Section A 11 of the Town of Brookline's Sale of Alcoholic Beverages, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ms. Correa, do you have a recommendation?
Thank you. So I will just remind the board what the board has done in the past in similar situations, and of course, there are options to explore. But in the past, what the board has done was give six months in the vote to either activate the license or have had the license transferred. In other words, apply for the transfer and have it ruled on within the deadline, which has generally been six months, and that's in accordance with alcoholic beverage commission control expectations. They want to see at least six months before, from the, from the hearing. So that's been, that's been what the board has done in the past.
Could you advise us and the holder of the license, how long does it take when you come, you get a buyer and then, or a transfer, or somebody to transfer to? How long does that, the process take for the time you actually file the papers in Town Hall until you get the hearing and the board agrees to the transfer?
I wonder if someone from the Selectmen's office could say, I'm not sure exactly how...
I think there's a requirement under state law, but I think, I thought it was 30 days or something like that.
Well, there has to be a hearing within 30 days of application. That's, that's true.
So, you know, 30 days to... Yeah, so maybe six, eight weeks is good.
So two months?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably a little less.
So the recommendation is a deadline of July 17th. If nothing happens, it would be canceled, effective July 18th. How does that sound?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
May I just add that Ms. Yu could certainly come in and request more time?
Yep.
If necessary, if, do you understand? Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from the board before I take a vote?
Do we know how many wine and malt beverage licenses are available now? Were we at our cap, or are there some...
We, I checked with, I checked that with Ms. Costello recently, and she said, I believe, three or so, three to four.
Okay, so I'll move that the board cancel the license effective July 18th, 2017, if by July 17th, 2017, the licensee has not either activated the license or obtained Board of Selectmen approval to transfer the license to a new Brookline location or to a new licensee at the same Brookline location. Okay? All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Good luck in your sale.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And the last item on the agenda is the letter for 134 to 138 Babcock Place. And I think the draft before us, in my view, pretty fairly represents what we heard in the comments from the members, and it has some suggested changes that I made. Just chime in?
I just have a, I think it's a typographical mistake that in the resection, it should be Babcock Place, not Babcock Street.
Which section is that?
Right at the front of the letter, at the head.
Really?
Well...
No, I think the name of the project is Babcock Place. The address is Babcock Street.
No, he's referring to, oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. So it's the address...
Well, so where I'm getting confused is I'm looking at the agenda, and it says it comprehends the permit at 134, 138...
The agenda's wrong.
Okay. Got it. I withdraw my comment.
The, just for anyone watching, the, I'll summarize the letter for those who don't have it for them. It asks Mass. Housing to take into account the fact that there are many other applications in town, and including those in close proximity to the proposed project. It gives examples on how we have supported affordable housing, especially in the immediate area on Beale Street, the Pine Street End Project, which is a beautiful project that we just had a ribbon cutting just a few months ago, is right around the corner. So, you know, this is a neighborhood that has demonstrated its acceptance of affordable housing, so this is not a NIMBY reaction. This is a reaction to the size and the massing, and from my perspective, the architecture of this project and how it relates to the surrounding buildings. We comment on the inaccuracies in the application and point out a few of them, and then we point out that the project is really an anomaly in this residential neighborhood, and that the project reads commercial rather than residential in its, in its design. The bulk, the height, the scale, the absence of open space and lack of reasonable setbacks are in stark contrast to the neighborhood, and we call upon the Mass. Housing to, to apply its, its own guidelines. We also point out that it's just adjacent to the Graffin McKay Historic District, and while 40B trumps historic districts, we ask Mass. Housing to be mindful and respectful of the historic district. We say once again about their adherence to the guidelines. We discuss further relationship to the surrounding buildings, comment further on the lack of open space. We include a picture of, of the rendering showing the relationship to 140 Babcock Street and how the building surrounds and overwhelms 140 Babcock Street. And to me, that, that rendering is just, you know, when I saw it on the board last week, it just kind of took my breath away. It was pretty, it was pretty stark.
Yeah, I'm very glad that that picture is included, and we will be attaching, I noticed we got some things from Neighbors that had some actual photographs of nearby properties. Those will be attached as well, right? The neighbors...
Everything that's submitted to either the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Department will be attached.
Okay, make sure you get the ones that just came in to us recently?
Yeah, we have them.
Okay, because I thought some of their photographs as well kind of graphically demonstrate how jarring this project is.
Right, on what's page five, if you flip the page, Selectman Daley, included here is an, is an image of, a misleading image showing the, the relationship to the, to the houses on Stedman Street and how the elevation between that building, that, between that site and the Stedman Street properties is really misleading in the, in the application.
I'm not sure you mentioned, if you did, I apologize if I didn't hear you, in an earlier paragraph, stated out, Mass. Housing, that there are many inconsistencies and inaccuracies, this being one of them, that you just mentioned in the PEL application, and that we really, we believe that they should review an accurate...
Right.
...and complete proposal and not one that's full of inaccuracies and incomplete information, so inconsistencies, including this, and the grade level issue is significant between this property and Stedman Street.
We talk about the parking ratio, I'm concerned about the low parking ratio, and the fact that we're not recommending that the number of spaces be increased, but rather the number or size of the units be decreased. And then the fewer units will allow for a smaller building footprint, and then they, with a fall, with fewer units, a smaller footprint, they'll have a better ability to more effectively relate to the surroundings. And that's, of course, assuming that they get away from that commercial reading architecture, which I didn't like. We ask once again that Mass. Housing direct the developer to work with the town to achieve an improved project. And actually, that's the one thing Mass. Housing has done a little better than the other subsidizing agencies in their PELs. They have directed developers to work with us. Some developers work with us better than other developers. Hopefully, this developer will be one of those who work better with us, I think. On the other end, we have the developer at 40 Center Street who has not worked very well with us, and I'll state that publicly. And in conclusion, we ask Mass. Housing to, one, demand that the applicant provide an accurate and complete application, and, two, we ask Mass. Housing to apply its design guidelines to this project prior to issuing a PEL.
I think that's strong language, and I appreciate that it's in here. I think it's important. Those two points are very important. I'd like to make a third point, which is a minor one, and I know it's, it's the grammarian in me, that, in the last bullet on the page before, well, in our, in our packet, it's a, it's on page six, but it's probably in a tightened version on page five, says the viability of any landscape and screening plan at the rear of the property, given the limited setback grade and shadowing from the building. The adjective limited could, in that situation, apply to grade and shadowing, and I don't think that's what you mean. So I would, I would put the limited setback after shadowing, if you would.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good catch, thank you.
So the, the public hearing last week, Neighbors brought up a number of issues around traffic and around the grade change and requesting a shadow study and the impact of this development on trees and vegetation. I want to give those watching this some assurance that those things are in this letter as well. We're talking about trying to prevent the issuance of a PEL. Should it be issued, we've put in writing at this very early stage that we want more information about all those issues that, that were brought up last week, and that I think many on this board are very sympathetic to.
Right.
I just want to say, I'm looking on page five at the misleading image that they have of their building, and where you're saying it doesn't show the grade change to Stedman Street and some of those things. But when I look at this picture, there's so many, many things that are misleading about it. I mean, it looks like this building is being placed somewhere on the MIT campus.
You know, these... Lots of open space.
Well, but they've got neighboring houses that we know are like two-story houses, showing the equivalent or taller than this five-story building. I mean, it's just ridiculous. So I think if you could just add a little bit in that section about the many inconsistencies and, you know, flat-out misrepresentations in this image.
Any other comments, questions for Ms. Steinfeld, requests of Ms. Steinfeld? Okay, so what I will do is move that we authorize the chair to sign the letter with the appropriate amendments, as we discussed tonight, and I'll do that tomorrow at some point, I presume. So the motion is to authorize the chair to sign the letter to Mass. Housing on the...